Profit Group Feeding America. This spike in hungry children can be attributed in part to a winding down of pandemic relief programs that helped families access healthy food. Yet, child hunger is something that the federal government provides funds to help mitigate. But this year, 14 Republican-led states have rejected federal money, largely due to anti-welfare sentiment. Nebraska is accepting federal money, and advocates hope a new program there will help offset some of the additional food costs facing families. Megan Harmon is a community organizer for Food and Nutrition Access with Nebraska Apple Seed, a nonprofit that fought for Nebraska's participation in the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Summer Electronic Benefit Transfer Program for low-income kids. Megan, welcome to Here and Now.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
I'd love you to tell me about families there in Nebraska. What are you hearing about the challenges they're facing when it comes to hunger? How bad is the situation right now?
Yeah, I think we're seeing a significant rise in the cost of groceries, and a lot of families' wages are not keeping pace with those rising costs. I hear a lot about how summers are some of the hardest times of year for families when it comes to their food budgets. I would also say that the school meals program, the school breakfasts and school lunches that are available during the school year are one of the most transformative interventions for childhood hunger in our nation. And so, when we're looking at the summer months and seeing kids who are no longer able to access those resources, and in a state like Nebraska, have very low participation in the Summer Food Service Program, which provides meal sites during the summer to help kind of cover that gap, a program like Summer EBT becomes especially key to covering that difference.
And EBT, of course, is the Electronic Benefit Transfer Program. State officials there in Nebraska expect that it'll serve, you know, around 175,000 students while school is out for the summer. Tell us how it works.
Yeah, so, families will receive a Summer EBT card in the mail for their school-aged children. This card will have $120 on it per child who is eligible in the household. Families might qualify because their kids are enrolled in free or reduced-price lunch at school, their family is already receiving SNAP benefits, Medicaid, or a few other qualifying benefits programs, or a family can go through an application process if they're at a school that already provides free meals to all students.
And, you know, I want to ask you about what it was that you and other organizers had to do to convince your elected officials, particularly Nebraska's government, to reverse course and accept this federal money, because as we mentioned, 14 Republican-led states chose to opt out of the Summer EBT. Nebraska's government was skeptical but changed its mind after hearing stories from high school students who are hungry. Can you speak more about how you and other organizers? What was it that you did to help change the governor's mind?
Yeah, of course. So, we worked very closely with a variety of community members across the state to raise awareness in the media and to launch a petition that ultimately garnered over 6,500 signatures and gave really broad representation from different Nebraska communities. So, when we saw the governor ultimately reverse his decision, I think, to me, it really was a testament to the broad amount of community support that showed up over and over again throughout this process to reassert that this was a need.
And, you know, it's not just your state. As we mentioned, there are others where Republican governors or leaders in those states are seeing this as a handout. In some places, there are technical challenges with the program's implementation, but it really seems a little bit like, you know, especially today, as prices are so high, do you think that this anti-welfare sentiment, especially in an election year, is going to carry water? Because I would imagine hungry children, that's not a partisan issue, there will be as many hungry children in families that might vote Republican as there are in families that might vote Democrat.
Yeah, to me, it really comes down to, it's not a handout to give people basic needs. Food is a basic need, and feeding kids is such a common sense thing. So, our state taking that on and recognizing that that's an important thing to do is hopefully something that other governors across the nation will recognize as an important thing to do and a step that they should be taking regardless of partisan politics.
Megan Harmon is a community organizer for Food and Nutrition Access with the nonprofit Nebraska Apple Seed. Megan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WB.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called the one, and I'll ask our esteemed Deputy Clerk, Mrs. Way up to please call the room.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. And a call, Ms. President. Thank you. This afternoon, our invocation will be delivered by the Reverend Vanny Harold Pastor of Church Alive International. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Pastor, it's good to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor Lee. Let's pray. Lord, first of all, I give thanks for those who govern us, those who shepherd our city. And as your word says, we are first to make prayers and thanksgiving for those who are over us, and we do that today. Now, Heavenly Father, we pray from your word in the Book of Proverbs, Chapter 8, verses 1 through 3. Does not wisdom call out? Does not understanding raise her voice? At the highest point along the way where the paths meet, she takes her stand beside the gate leading into the city. At the entrance, she cries aloud. We invite and welcome you, Lord Jesus, the very Spirit of wisdom, into this city. May our leaders heed wisdom's call and learn that which will bring the greatest blessing upon the city. Separate out today man's intellect from heaven's wisdom and empower our leaders to turn their ears to you and to those who speak with truth and revelation from above. Today may we be found standing in the fear of the Lord. You said in Proverbs 8:13 and 14 that you hate pride, arrogance, and the evil way, and to fear you is to hate evil, the fear of the Lord being the beginning of all wisdom. With you, Lord, are counsel, sound wisdom, understanding, and strength. By you, kings reign and rulers decree justice. Therefore, I invoke the awesome fear and reverence of the Lord God Almighty upon this council today. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. The first order of business this afternoon is for us to certify a closed meeting, and I will call on Councilman Lou Pretty to make the motion.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance. We'd like, well, first, like to note that this only applies to the two closed meetings that we had on the person, I'm sorry, on the school board matter and on the economic development announcement.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you call the room, please?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. All right, the announcements, the Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. In order to do that, you need to file an application, and you can please, I mean, you can do that by going to the city's website at www.roanookva.gov to complete an online application, or you can call the clerk's office, and they will walk you through that process. But this council is always ready to receive and encourage all of our citizens to become or seek to be a part of our boards and commissions. They're very important entities of what we do, and they, we need your support, need your help, so step up, step up and be a part of those things to help us govern this seven-time all-American city. And thank you for your willingness to serve those who have filed for an application. All right, next item on the agenda is presentations and acknowledgements, and it's a proclamation declaring June 2024 as Pride Month. And I'm going to call on Mr. Councilman Peter Volason, and Ms. Zee, is she here? Okay.
And I'm excited to read this proclamation and present to the Roanoke Diversity Center. Whereas, Roanoke is a welcoming and compassionate city that embraces the diversity of our residents, including our LGBTQ+ community, in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and ally citizens have been a part of Roanoke's history since its beginning and a visible community formed here in the '60s, anchored by the region's first known gay bar, The Trade Winds, which opened on Franklin Road in 1953. Whereas the first gay liberation organization in the city, the Gay Alliance of the Roanoke Valley, was founded in 1971 and was followed in 1977 by the Free Alliance for Individual Rights, with both organizations advocating against the harassment of gay men by bar owners and law enforcement. Whereas transgendered Roanokeres became increasingly visible in the 1970s, and a group of trans women attempted, in the late 1970s, to organize the region's first chapter of Tri-S, excuse me, a pioneering national trans organization. And in late 1978, The Park, which today is the only nightclub that remains from that era, opened to rave reviews. In 1980, lesbians in Roanoke formed their own organization, First Friday, and the annual Roanoke Valley Women's Retreats. Whereas the AIDS crisis hit Roanoke hard, with the first local death from AIDS reported in 1983, gay activist groups such as the Blue Ridge Lambda Alliance and the Roanoke Valley Chapter of the Virginia Gay Alliance organized the earliest AIDS advocacy and care work, as did the Metropolitan Community Church of the Blue Ridge. Out of these efforts emerged the Blue Ridge AIDS Support Services and the Roanoke AIDS Project. Today, the drop-in center carries on this important work in our community. Whereas in 1990, a coalition of gay and lesbian groups formed the Alliance of Lesbian and Gay Organizations, and in September of that year, they put on the city's first Pride Festival in Wasina Park. In September 2000, an anti-gay shooting at the Backstreet Cafe on Salem Avenue took the life of one person and wounded six others. This hate crime shook the city and opened a new chapter in our LGBTQ+ history. Whereas the 21st century has witnessed the emergence of new organizations and initiatives, including the founding of Ladies and Gents of the Blue Ridge, Transgender Alliance in 2007, the growth of the Roanoke Pride and Pride in the Park Festival, the formation of Youth Saga and Prism Foundation supporting LGBTQ youth, the region's first LGBTQ+ community center, the Roanoke Diversity Center in 2013, the founding diversity, excuse me, the founding of Diversity Camp in 2014, and the creation of our first uniquely Black LGBTQ+ organization, the House of Expression in 2019. And then, we also have Southwest Virginia Pride being created in 2022. Whereas Roanoke is a place where the LGBTQ+ community can live, work, love, and play, now therefore, I, Peter J. Volason, member of Roanoke City Council, on behalf of Sherman Lee, P. Lee, Sr., Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, do hereby proclaim June 2024 throughout this great seven-time, soon to be eight, all-American city as Pride Month. Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you all for coming out and supporting Pride events, the Roanoke Diversity Center, Southwest Virginia Pride, and The Park, not just during June Pride Month, but throughout the year. Thank you for having the most diverse council and allowing us to have representation in Roanoke, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volason. All right, the next item on the agenda is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation, or report to council, as he may deem appropriate. And Madam Clerk, are there any citizens signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. We have.
Can you call them in the order of the other chicken sign?
Yes, I will. Rafiq McNamara?
Is this my last one? It's your last one.
Yours. That's right here.
Okay.
It's yours. Frida Cathcart? Chris Kraft?
Wait. Can I go?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm just reading all the citizens that we have. Keely Meadows? Emily Kate Copenhagen? And Christine Troster?
Is that all of them?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Long peace to everyone. My name is Rafiq McNamara. I spoke here, I think, about two weeks ago, week and a half ago. This is an issue I probably plan on coming to speak again and again until there's some change or response. I want to start off with a statistic. Since the beginning of the genocide in Gaza, actually, the first four months of the genocide in Gaza, more children died than all other conflicts in the world combined. It's eight months into that genocide. The Gaza Strip is smaller than the Roanoke Valley, a little bit bigger than Roanoke itself. And more children died in that small space in four months than in all of the conflicts in the world, Ukraine, Congo, you name it, combined in four months. I'll come back to that statistic if I remember. When I was here the last time, I talked about how my wife had to watch live TV as her relatives were pulled out of a house that was bombed, most likely by American bombs, possibly by companies that are at least in this state. And it was horrible to see dead people and trying to figure out, is that this person? But we saw her cousin, who's a nurse, that was still alive, helping. And I can't say we felt happy, but it was something positive. And I also told you that my wife's family, her mother, father, 12 nephews and nieces, two brothers, fled to Rafa. And every time, the place where they were at, Ybna, was bombed, and it was bombed several times, because everywhere in Gaza is being bombed constantly. We would go to the Arabic news to see and try to call them. Now, they fled again, and it's the same thing. When you hear about those tent massacres, we're wondering if it's my wife's family. I'm going to go back to the statistic. In the first four months of this genocide, more children were killed than in all other conflicts in the world combined. But wait, for the past three years combined, more children were killed in Gaza in the first four months of this conflict than all other conflicts in the world for the past three I really thought I was going to have more time, because I have more to say, but God willing, I'll come back. Please do something. Please pay attention. Act like a human. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Frida Cathcart. I'm the president of the GFWC Star Women's Club. Four days ago, I sent all of you all an email with the subject "Four-Year Anniversary: Roanoke Police Firing on Peaceful Protesters." And in the body of the email, it said, "How long do the protesters and the public need to wait for Roanoke City to apologize for the police violating their constitutional rights? Richmond took less than a week to apologize. Please take the time to watch this recording about what happened that day and why we need to do the work to make it sure it doesn't happen again." And then, there was a link to a Zoom recording that was made on May 25, 2021, with the access passcode. I would have liked to have put that on the Facebook page that's recording this, making it available to the public, but I see you can only message, so this doesn't go out to the public. But I think the public should have access to that. That program won the GFWC Virginia State Award for the work that we did on it. Brenda Hale is one of the speakers in it, as well as B.J. Lark. And as a photojournalist, my work was there as well, as well as a video by a witness that was there in the midst of everything as it was happening. I didn't get one response to that email, not one acknowledgement. If you didn't see it, please go and look and find it. What you will find there is the evidence of the police firing on Black ministers, Black teachers, and Black children. They were firing pepper balls, which is a chemical irritant that is very harmful. You'll also see the record, recording, that there was a white man from North Carolina that came up to Roanoke to supposedly help Roanoke defend the city, that was armed with an assault rifle and a pistol on the other side of the police line from where the Black people were being held up by the police, that nobody questioned. I'm tired of systemic racism in this city. Last Thursday, I also went to the Gainesboro presentation about the roads, and I asked the planning manager about if there had been meaningful community engagement. He raised his voice to me, not to me to tell him what meaningful community engagement was. I didn't even get to finish my question. And I said, "Please don't raise your voice to me." And he continued to try and talk over me, and I said, "Enough." I had to say, "Enough," the second time, and then I walked away. That is inexcusable. Roanoke needs to do better with our community engagement and our accountability and in making amends for past mistakes, not back in urban renewal, which is also important, but right now, right today. Gainesboro deserves better. We all do. Thank you.
Chris Kraft?
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, members of council. I am here in my role as the president of the Wildwood Civic League, which is 90 years old this year, but according to the state of Virginia, again, we don't exist. And when the state of Virginia tried to call our neighborhood services office, like I have, no one returns calls. The city is going down the hill, going down the toilet. The buck stops here, we need to stop it. There's too much going on. We had a wonderful Parks and Recreation Director, Steve Beshear, bless his heart, rest in peace, and he went out and did what the citizens want. We got, we lost another one, Michael Clark, because he listened to the citizens. There's departments in this city that don't care what the citizens want, even VDOT. I've got, called VDOT about the project they want to do on 460, that's putting all them stupid block things in to block traffic from going straight across. I've got 75% of businesses on 460, said if that plan is put into action, they will leave 460. Dollar General, Antique Mark, all of them will leave. Is that what you want? And last but not least, as of this afternoon, I will be filing an ADA act against a lady named Pat with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. She raised her voice with me a little while ago, because I didn't have some paperwork in by Friday, and I told her, I said, "How am I supposed to have it in when I'm in the west wing of the hospital, having a defibrillator tuned up? How am I supposed to have that stuff here?" And she said, "Well, there's no excuse. The buck stops here. We need this city to start going back uphill, but right now, it's going downhill. We need to listen to the citizens." I bet you right now, I can tell you what somebody told me. As Ms. Moon can tell you, I've been applying for over 15 years to be a part of the school board, because I love kids. I want to see our school system thrive. But no city council wants to put me on the school board, because they know I'm going to speak the truth, I'm going to do what the parents want done, and I'm not in no cliques. Like I said, the buck stops here.
Keely Meadows?
Keely Meadows.
I'm not going to talk for super long because I don't have a speech written, but I first want to say in regards to one of the speakers before about police brutality in Roanoke, it's only gotten worse, and it will literally only continue to get worse until council does something about it or until the police just don't exist anymore, to say something real controversial. Anyway, what I came here to talk about was a ceasefire resolution. I came here about a month ago, and I asked you guys to at least put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda so that you could discuss it. And from what I can see, it's not on the agenda at this time, and it hasn't been on the agenda at any of the past meetings. But we're going to keep coming and keep hoping that we see it on the agenda. The longer we wait and the longer we don't do anything and don't take action, the more children die, the more women die, the more people die. And it makes no sense why that wouldn't tug on your heartstrings and call you to action. So if anything, I would ask that the city manager call on the council to vote on a ceasefire resolution or at least discuss one. Thank you.
Emily Kate Copenhagen.
I'm Emily Kate Copenhagen, familiar with most of you all. So I wanted to come with a couple of different statistics and to kind of localize the problem. So in February, Mayor Lee accepted an award for a certified welcoming city. And he was quoted saying that Roanoke and have a commitment to fostering inclusive environments where everyone feels valued and welcomed. I think that's incredible. I think that's a city that I want to live in. And so now it's, okay, what does that look like? And so I saw that we received one star, and we can get five. So automatically, I'm like, great, what's between us and that second star? And it looks like we've got economic development and job training. And so that makes me think about what life is like after a ceasefire. And so when we are sending folks to help rebuild Gaza, we want to make sure that we are sending people who are skilled, people who are nurses, doctors, lawyers who can deal with immigration issues, lawyers who can deal with the refugee status. So we have, it's, in 2016, there was a report by George Mason saying that in the Roanoke metro area, we've got about 16,000 immigrants. That was in 2016. And then I saw in a report, we are up 8% in 2024. I didn't get too much into the math because I didn't see how they did their work. But if we want to say Roanoke's got about 100,000 people, then that's great, 16%. I know 16% means a lot to all of you here. And so let's try to think about what we can do, what Roanoke can do. We can invest in our immigrants. We can make sure our immigrants are getting their BSNs, getting MDs, getting DOs, and really trying to make sure that not only Roanoke is thriving, but we're doing so in a way that includes everyone, and we're not trying to pander towards whoever our higher-ups are. So kind of thinking about what life is like after ceasefire, and I know that economic development and job training in Roanoke will help rebuild Gaza if we let it. And so you all have the power to make those investments here. And I want to say, I know Rafi had to step out for a work thing, but on Thursdays at 5:30, we've kind of got a rotating place, but for now, we're in the teen room at the library downtown. Thursdays at 5:30, he's doing a docu-series and then a talkback. So I would invite everyone, if you, you don't have to say Free Gaza with your whole chest, to show up to a documentary and learn more. So that's the ask here, is to learn more. And I know that we can meet with two of you all at a time legally, and so look out in your emails, you're going to be seeing some meeting times. Thank you.
Christine Troster.
My name is Christine Troster. I feel a little silly now. My issue seems so small compared to the things that were brought up, but I'm a mom of two young boys, and so they are my world. I just wanted to bring up the issue of the playgrounds and the lack of shade that we have there. I am one of the organizers for a group called Outdoor Kids, and so we encourage families to connect with each other outside and with nature. So we do a lot of playground meetups and nature walks and toddler-led hiking. And the biggest issue when we go to the playground, especially during the warmer months, is the lack of shade. There are, you know, a handful of playgrounds in Roanoke and the surrounding areas that provide shade. And so in the warmer months, starting, you know, late spring, where the playgrounds are hot by 10 o'clock and are untouchable, and we're not able to play there anymore pretty much all day. And so providing shade for our playgrounds, whether it's through trees or shade canopies, would allow families to enjoy our city amenities for much longer, especially because, you know, we want to encourage outside play, you know, less screen time. So I just wanted to bring up that issue. I've spoken to Parks and Rec, and they've given us some direction on how to move forward, but I wanted to bring it up with the city to keep it in your agenda and like keep it in the back of your minds to be able to maybe think about that when we're developing our Parks and Rec. I know that you guys have been replacing playgrounds, so being able to think about the shade for families in that aspect, too. Thank you.
Ms. Troster. Ms. Troster, just wanted to ask you, I appreciate you talking to Parks and Rec. Could you share with us which ones in particular you're thinking about, which playgrounds need more shade?
So pretty much all of them. There's like two I can count that have shade, and that's Stone Bridge, and that's Inventon. And then Penn Forest is a elementary school, but every other playground, like lacks shade. And even with the newer structures, they have shade at the top, but it doesn't cover the slides, which is like the huge problem. It's like kids can't go down the slides if it's hot. So I have a list of, you know, if I'm thinking of like where I would like shade canopies, but then I would also like to work with Parks and Rec to see which playgrounds are in line to be replaced in the next years. But like off the top of my head, I could think of like Fishburne Park. They recently got a playground, but there's hardly any shade there. East Gate is another one, there's no shade. So there's pretty much all of them, I would say.
I know Highland Park has plenty of shade, but they have older trees there, too.
Highland Park, yeah. Highland Park is afternoon shade, and so in the morning, it's not great, but in the afternoon, it's fine. Yeah. But, yeah, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, what are you proposing that we do there? What's been your communication with the rec department? How do we fix that? Because, you know, trees just don't grow overnight. Put trees, shade trees there. What's your...
Shade canopies are a great option. Like I know in Arizona, all of their playgrounds have shade canopies, and I've done some research, and I would say like depending on the size of the canopy, they're like $3,000 to $5,000. So it's not a ton of money. But shade canopies would make a huge difference in giving us some shade.
Okay. First I heard of that, but we'll continue to talk with our Parks and Recreation people and see how that works, what can be done.
Thank you so much.
That was our last speaker.
That was our last speaker?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. All right, is there a motion on the Consent Agenda?
No move. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the Consent Agenda is approved. Thank you. All right, we can move now to our regular agenda. Item number five is a public hearing. We have none. Item number six is petitions and communications, there are none. Item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of a city manager. And I'm pleased to recognize the city manager, there are no briefings this afternoon?
No, so there are no briefings?
All right. Seven, let's see, I've got some, these are here. 718, which is a recommendation of Human Services Advisory Board for funding of qualified agencies for fiscal year 2024, 2025. There's a typo in this, is that? Can someone show me where that typo is?
Actually, it's in with the, we're asked for the funding there with regards to the total of agents, the agencies is 28 to assist funding a total, it says 36, but it's actually 35 programs. One is not getting funding at all. So it was a total of 36 that programs that would have if they all had received it, but only 35 are receiving because one, which is the YMCA After School Program, Teen Club, will not be receiving any funding. So that totaled 35, unless someone wants to correct me in my count. But that's what I came up with.
So what we're proposing to change here?
So the friendly amendment should be, unless they had changed it to 36 programs, but it's actually 35. So the resolution actually needs to be corrected to be 35. But there was 36 total requests that the report refers to, which is correct. Yes. So I did see where that, when I read back through it again, I saw 36 with one not being funded, which made it 35.
Correct. Good afternoon, council. I'm Meredith Berger. I am standing in for Human Services today, and it might be that my best role for you today is to take questions back that if there are any, I'm unable to answer. It is true that there were 28 agencies, but 36 programs. Some of those agencies had multiple programs, such as Family Services had two, Family Promise had two, Children's Trust had four different programs that they were requesting funding on. So the resolution is where that 41 typo does occur with 36 in parenthesis, and we can get that corrected.
It's corrected in here.
It already is.
Right, it says 36, but it's actually 35.
Well, I think she just said it's 36 programs, not agencies.
36 programs.
Right.
But she is correct that the YMCA After School Program, if you will refer to the attachment.
Yes.
The After School Program for the YMCA is actually not being granted any funding.
So 35 being funded.
35 are being funded, 36 applied. So you did, did you make that friendly amendment?
Yes, that's what I was saying, it was a friendly amendment to correct that. But I did have a question, and you brought that up, that the YMCA After School Program, Teen Club, had made a request, but it wasn't funded. My question would be for the board, if you can get that information back to us, is the reason why they did not receive any funding when I saw here, and nothing against any of the others, but I saw where a few had got total funding. So I'm just trying to see where others were decreased in their funding amount, why the why could not receive any money at all.
Okay. And I can check on that. We have had some that did not get their requests in in time.
Okay.
I'm not certain if this was one of those. I will follow up with that, and I will get that information back to Assistant City Manager O'Callaghan for you. Okay?
All right, and...
Mayor Lee.
If I could just follow up on...
Pardon me?
If I could just follow up on...
Okay, yes, sir.
I had the same kind of question as Ms. Moon Reynolds as to how funding was laid out. Is there any way that you can just give us a brief overview of how, of like what these funds are, how these decisions are made?
I can give a brief overview, that would be helpful. There is a committee, an advisory board made up of citizens, professionals. Some of them, a couple of them used to be at Human Services, and they are all brought together every January, I believe, for this purpose. An amount of funding in this year and last fiscal year was $435,000 is allotted. Applications are sent in by the programs who want the funding, and the Human Services Advisory Board goes one by one through those applications, and they review the criteria for the program, the amount of money that they want for the program, and they, I do not have that scoring system with me, but they have, I guess, a matrix, if you will, to decide how the funding ends up being what it is. And I can also provide that if that would be helpful. Okay?
Yes, I mean, I just wanted...
Does that answer your question?
I just wanted the public to know what, how this is dealt with, and that, you know, like just because the YMCA did not receive funding from the Human Services Advisory Board, they may have received it from somewhere else to cover the program.
Correct, yes.
So just wanted to make that clear.
That's good to know, if funding is not a funding source.
Absolutely. I will get back with those who work with this, and I will get you some answers.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pretty.
All right, pardon me.
I'm just going to move the amended resolution.
Okay, because I'm...
Yeah.
And I'll say...
Or I can second your motion.
Okay, whichever. I'll make the motion clearly and, yes.
All right, make the motion, I mean, the motion made?
Yes, it's made.
And seconded.
And then seconded. All right, Madam Clerk, please just call the roll.
I need to read the title paragraph.
Which title paragraph, I'm sorry?
"A Resolution Concurring in the Recommendations of the Human Services Advisory Board for Allocation of City Funds to Various Qualified Agencies to Assist Such Agencies in the Performance of Their Programs for Fiscal Year 2024 Through 2025, and Authorizing the City Manager or his designee to Execute a Contract with the Council of Community Services to Perform the Necessary Performance Audits to Evaluate the Effectiveness and Efficiency of All the Funded Programs by Such Agencies."
All right, any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. As a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
"An Ordinance to Transfer Funding to Specific Human Services Committee Agencies, Amending and Reordaining Certain Sections of the 2024-2025 General Fund Appropriations, and Dispensing with the Second Reading by Title of this Ordinance."
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hang on, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Now at item 71B, where we have another change to reflect the $275,000. This is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
"An Ordinance Appropriating Funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia, Department of Historic Resources, Amending and Reordaining Certain Sections of the 2023-2024 Grant Fund Appropriations, and Dispensing with the Second Reading by Title of this Ordinance."
All right, any discussion by members of council? All right, any discussion among the council?
Mayor Lee.
Yeah.
I'd just like to, to note, I know you said it already, that the version of the ordinance that is attached online reflects five hundred thousand for the upcoming fiscal year, which is money that was provided in the budget that was recently adopted by the General Assembly, but why this was revised is this is to distribute the funds for the current fiscal year that we're in, because they finally finalized the caboose budget that only allocates them two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. One item that's not included in this ordinance, but was part of the budget that passed the General Assembly, is that the offices of the Secretary of Education and the Secretary of Finance are going to put together a report by November of this year to determine the feasibility of making the Museum of Transportation into a state agency, and so they'll report back to state entities at that time, and that will likely influence what their future allocations are from the state.
Good, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Since we did amend the budget ordinance to two hundred and seventy-five thousand, does the report stay the same for the five hundred, or does it change as well?
Yeah, the report needs, no, that's fine, the report needs to be amended as well for the two seventy-five.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out. Okay, so the report changes to...
And the dollars that are referred to in the two seventy-five are in our possession, so they've already been transferred from the state to us. We're just a pass-through for this, so the funding is here, and it's ready to be passed through, but yes, both of those will need to be amended.
So they just need to, okay, then that's what I need, thank you.
Well, what action do we need to take on this?
It's already been taken.
None, it's been taken, Mayor.
All right, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. At this time, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager, any comments you may have.
Thank you, Mayor, no, no comments today, thank you.
All right, item number two, the, from the attorney, the city, I thought I'd say Attorney General. The city attorney, none. Item number eighty, reports of committees, none. Item number nine, unfinished business, none. Item number ten is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. A resolution appointing three trustees to serve on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office, each commencing July first, 2024, and ending June third, 2027. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution appointing Michael L. Cherry the second, Aralee Quintana, and Deidra Trigg as school board trustees of the Roanoke City School Board for terms commencing July one, 2024, and ending June thirty, 2027.
All right, thank you. Any discussion by members of council? All right, let me just say thank you. Thank Councilwoman White Boyd for her work in putting this together, and I appreciate the time and effort we did on it, and I think we have, we've selected three people that's gonna serve our, our school division well.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I may just add, I would also like to thank Dr. David Howell and Carrie Garnett for their willingness to serve and for coming forward, and hopefully they will consider trying again next time. They were really good candidates, they were all good candidates, and we had some very difficult decisions, but I do agree with Mayor, I think we have selected three good candidates. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have no other discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item number eleven, motion of miscellaneous business inquiries and comments by the mayor and the members of council. Are there any comments? Bring me anybody here, Vice Mayor.
I, I just had an announcement I'd like to share. Tomorrow, Tuesday, June fourth, the Forty-Eight State Tour, Saving America's Graveyards and the Friends of Old Lake Cemetery, will be presenting a free workshop on cleaning, restoring, repairing, and leveling grave monuments. It's a continuation of restoration by Friends of Old Lake Cemetery that is located at twelve fifty Orange Avenue. For those who would like to attend, you'll want to park on Carver Avenue, which is located behind the cemetery. It's a hands-on workshop being taught by Jonathan Apple, a national expert on monument restoration, and the historic Old Lake Cemetery is a nineteenth and twentieth century African-American burial ground. The city-owned portion of the site fell into disrepair and further deteriorated when nearly one thousand graves were moved in October nineteen sixty-one to make way for Interstate five eighty-one interchange. So at nine in the morning, there will be a walking tour of the cemetery. From ten to twelve, there will be a cleaning demonstration, twelve to twelve-thirty lunch, and then twelve-thirty to three repair work. So it's an all-day event, but persons can be, can show up anytime. I would encourage you to bring gloves, wear long sleeves preferably, and jeans, just for the restoration work. But if, if you've not been there, this is a great way to experience the cemetery and to participate in its restoration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Did you do your...
That's what I did my doctorate on, yeah.
Your doctorate, okay, dissertation, is it? Okay. Oh, anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to ask our residents to send us positive energy as we go out to Denver the end of this week, along with Katie Hedrick, Angie O'Brien, Carol Corbin, who've been working on our presentation, and Mayor Lee, to bring home our number eight All-America City Award, and so we, we're, we're looking forward to that. We're getting our presentation ready, so we just want you all to send us some positive energy as we present our case as to why we should be an All-America City again for the eighth time. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. We'll be competing against the two other cities in Virginia that's been nominated.
Boo.
I won't, I won't say that.
We won't even mention their names.
I won't mention their names, but that's, that's gonna be, uh, pretty interesting, but thank you, yeah, we'll be, we'll, we'll be heading to Denver. Unfortunately, the Denver Nuggets NBA team won't be playing, they've been eliminated from the playoffs, so we won't be able to see that, but we look forward to meeting our colleagues from across the country in, in Denver. This will be my third trip, I think.